Good evening and welcome to the public hearing to accept and expend gifts and grants of $5,000 and over of the Merrimack School Board tonight, Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. At this time, we will open the public hearing and I will turn the microphone over to Marge Chaffrey to present the gift and grant.
Thank you. So what I want you to know is that we have had an anonymous donor come forward who is very interested in helping our needy as children, which would be defined as our homeless students. So what the donor asked was for us to go forward and to try and calculate what the amount might be to take care of their initial needs. So as you know, we have a homeless liaison that is tethered to the school system. Her name is Jody Hanley. She's been before you many times. Her background is in social work and she, in fact, is the one who has established a relationship with all of our homeless families. So she is really the one who helped me along with Sue Lures, who you've seen at your table before, who oversees Title I services. So what we did is we looked at how many students do we have? We have 22. That was June 30 because obviously the donor came forward before we started school, so I'm basing this on end of year. We have 10 at the elementary, two at the middle, and 10 at the high school. So the first thought was that we needed to take a look at a clothing allowance. And what Jody has done in the past is she has purchased cards like at Walmart or establishments such as that. And then the family goes off and purchases what is necessary and comes back having kept receipts. So we figured there would be a $200 allowance for elementary students, a $275 allowance for middle school students, and $375 for high school students. That also being inclusive of gas cards for those students who would drive to work after school because high school students very often will have a job. And that would purchase especially a winter coat, might purchase sneakers, or just pants and tops, I mean, just regular things that you need every day. In addition, there would be money to be able to supplement the students' free lunches because they all get free lunches, but then there are snack times and so these students don't necessarily have snacks. So the thought would be that there would be a grocery card purchased in order to supplement for snacks. One of the things that's happened to us in the last couple of years is that these families will often be in a car or they might hop from one set of friends or acquaintances to another. But every now and again, we'll get asked about housing them perhaps in a hotel. So what we did is we went to Wood Springs Suites, we went to the Inn at Daniel Webster, we went to Holiday Express, and we found out what the rate was per night. And so if we found a family in need, in jeopardy, then we would be able to house them for a brief period of time. Once we had put all of this together, this information was shared with the donor. The donor felt that this was very reasonable and is willing to come forward with a very generous donation of $10,000, hoping that the board will approve the expenditure. And Matt and I have spent some time together talking in terms of how we would monitor this. We already have a good system in place because Jody Hanley, over the years, has been the only homeless liaison that we've had. She's monitored all spending because before we would do it through the McKinney-Vento Act, if you remember, whatever we expended. So we would need to have receipts and that kind of thing. So she's already established that with these families. They understand that. So it won't be like we're doing something completely new. We've kind of got a past here. But this is going to help us a great deal because we've been limited before in what we could do. And the other thing I said to you is that I base this on the number that we ended the year with. As we start up school, that number might change and we might pick up a few more students. Normally, we average between 20 and 26 homeless students. That tends to be where we fall. So that is a summary of what I'm requesting.
Excellent. We do have the agenda item where we will actually vote on this, but are there any questions for public hearing while we have the public hearing open? Andy?
So maybe I missed it, but you talked about, did you, based on all that you described, did you provide a figure to the donor of what there would be? Or did the donor come up with a figure and you determined?
No. What I was asked to do was to put together a list of needs. I went through and worked with homeless liaison on pricing and cost. So the clothing allowance is based on needs of the past, especially elementary, middle, and high. We contacted the possible shelters, AKA the hotels in our area, to just find out what the rate is because the rate varies. And food-wise, we've had some knowledge about that, too.
Actually, what I was asking is, did the number drive?
So all of that was tallied up. It's less than 10,000. It's 9,000 plus. And that amount was given to the anonymous donor, and the anonymous donor said, "I'm willing to put forward $10,000."
Right. Okay. So if during the year we pick up additional homeless, there will be some money to help with them, but it's capped at 10,000 and once that's gone, it's gone based on the donation?
Uh huh. It's capped at 10,000, what I would say, as an initial gift. I feel that the party might be willing to go forward if, in fact, I came back and said, "We have picked up five to 10 additional students unknowingly because we just have started our school year." I would say the donor, based on going back and forth, would want this to be a satisfactory amount. But for right now, we have proven through putting the request together that it's a little less than $10,000.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the generosity is incredible.
Oh, it's incredible.
It's amazing. My main question was to understand what was sort of driving the figure so that people that are watching would know as well, as well as ourselves.
Right. It was not to be just a gift out of hand, "Here's 10,000, use it for the homeless." It was, "What would homeless students need? Calculate those costs, come back to me and share." And I was hopeful if we only got half the amount or a quarter of the amount, I would have been delighted. And when the answer was, "All right," because it's less than 10,000, it's nine-something, "I'm willing to put forward 10,000."
I mean, I just want to say, I think that's so generous. It's like, it gives me goosebumps, you know, and so thoughtful, you know, for someone to do that. But that's what I really wanted to say is, I know we'll get into it in our, the core of our meeting later, but a huge thank you in advance.
Naomi?
Just going to add my second to that, so to speak. I think that the idea that somebody was thinking about the whole child and student and not simply, as much as anytime somebody does it, it's wonderful, but not simply saying, "I'll pay for X number of lunches" or something like that, but was thinking about the student needs as a whole is incredibly thoughtful.
And just as the public hearing, we do have a member of the public that I'm not putting on the spot, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that you're also eligible to speak if you'd like. Excellent. Okay. So the other thing I would have to say is, you know, this is something that you have rolling statistics on. We have had Jody Hanley at the table. And it's real. It's in our town. And to have someone so gracious to come to us with this opportunity to be able to do so much for these students, this is something that's humbling, you know? It really is. And, you know, we can't thank them enough, as we have said, but this is something that I know we don't think about, you know, in our day-to-day lives, but it's definitely something that this district addresses throughout the school year. So if, in light of this donation, it really gives the opportunity to talk about it. And so this donation, not only does it provide monetary benefit, but it provides what I would call a social benefit, to really be able to put out there that we do have kids in need in our community. You know, we do have, you know, great homes, shutters on the windows, but there are people that don't have the good fortune and they're among us. So it's good that we could have this conscious conversation at our board table, knowing that the whole child is what we inherit in the school day and who we work with every day. So thank you on many levels, you know, especially Namely for the donation. So if there are no other questions, comments, or, we will close the public hearing and Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 4th, 2018 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And item number two is actually not public comment. We're mixing it up a bit. So we are introducing our new scribe, which is Patricia Gedzian. I practiced it. I messed it up on live, messed it on camera. So I believe you go by Trish.
Yes.
So Trisha.
Trish.
Trish. Good. Okay. So Trish, welcome. You are our new scribe. She comes with a very long and storied history of brilliant notes-taking. So as we were so concerned with the void in our team, I think that we went out and we found someone who will fill that void and do great work for us. So Trish, we welcome you. And if there's anything we can do to make you, you stay more comfortable, we'd love to do that. That chair is not it. We are not in our regular meeting room, so we did not get the cushy accommodations, but we'll be better for next time.
But please come back.
Please come back. Yes, please. So welcome and we're happy to have you. So we will go on to item number three now, which is public participation. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record. And they're beating down the doors to get to that microphone, so we're going to close public participation. And then we are going to go on to item number four, which is the board's response to the acceptance and expenditure of gifts and grants, $5,000 and over. At 6:45 this evening, we held our public hearing to review an opportunity from an anonymous donor for $10,000 to be gifted to the district to service our homeless students in the district in elementary, middle, and high school. And with that, we have to formally accept it now that we have taken in the testimony. So with that, I would entertain a motion to accept the gift and grant of $10,000 from the anonymous donor made by Andy. Do I have a second? Seconded by Naomi. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Well, just very briefly, as was discussed during the public hearing, the generosity of this is sort of off the charts to be able to provide to those that are in need, students that are in need in our district. And the sort of care that was taken to work with the administration to come up with a total that would meet the needs of what the students may require was just sort of, I was in awe about it. So absolutely, I certainly, certainly would gladly move that we accept this gift.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0 with our sincere gratitude.
Thank you.
Onto item number five, which is the preliminary discussion regarding short-term and long-term utilization of the Brentwood building. So we are presenting tonight, and Andy is our liaison for planning and building and also is our liaison, actually, you're not technically, at the time, you were a liaison for Suresk and now you are a board member representing Merrimack since they've changed organizational structure. So with that, Andy has a lot of insight as to the history of the building, our process of acquiring the building from many sides of the coin, not just our board place. So we definitely want to talk about, now that we have this building, what are our long-term goals and short-term goals? So with that, we definitely want to kind of frame out, you know, just a high-level expectation of what we'd like to do. So I will start with Marge, who I think can...
And I just wondered, could we invite Gage Perry to the table?
Absolutely. If he does not...
He's prepared to?
If you're prepared, we'd love to have you, Gage. So, thank you. We happen to pick a spot out with a microphone for you. So, and I do welcome to the table Gage Perry, who is the vice chair of planning and building?
Yes.
Okay. So, and welcome, Gage. So with that, we have a property that we closed on July 17th, and I think we do want to talk constructively about this property. Gage, I absolutely, you know, at any time, and if you want to start by weighing in, we're welcome to have you do that.
Andy can start.
That's fine. We'll let you. Go ahead, Andy. And then...
Marge wants to start.
There's like a ping-pong ball. Whoever wants to start, I yield. There you go.
Okay. So I'll do a little bit of history for folks. So as many folks know, the, what's been known, we call the red building, the Brentwood School that's right across from the Merrimack High School. It's been owned by the southeastern, southern, southeastern region, education, sports, whatever. It's, they have run Brentwood School for quite a while. They own the building. They chose to get out of sort of that business two or three years ago. And then, as Shannon sort of implied, Suresk is sort of out of the business of owning real estate and into really providing services for districts within our area as part of their charter. As a result, they put the building on the market to sort of remove its, the obligation from it as an entity. We, as a district, because of its proximity, we worked with Suresk through our attorneys back in about, not quite a year ago, but it was in the wintertime of 2017, 18, to come up with a potential purchase price, which we did. We, after much negotiation, we came up with a proposed purchase price of $275,000. And that was put on the ballot in April 2018 where the, on the school district ballot, for us to purchase the property. There was no expectation of what necessarily we would do. We did talk about the location of the property being very close, sort of that once-in-a-generation opportunity to purchase the land as well as the building that's on there. And the net-net is that the voters approved us purchasing the building so that after we hit the next fiscal year, when the budget money took place or when the approval took place, on July 17th, as you stated, we closed on it and now it's owned by the Merrimack School District for its essentially used. There's no encumbrance on it. It's a property that we now own as part of it. Now, there's been a lot of discussion over the past several years about what we do to solve the issue that we have with the, both the administrative offices, the SAU office, as well as the special education offices. Those are currently housed in two buildings that are essentially in the same proximity as the building we just purchased, both of which are very old. The blue building, which is special education, is in worse condition than the green building, which is the SAU office, but neither is really appropriate for the functions. There's been various proposals that we've done over the last several years. One actually went to the ballot about building a building behind, sort of an area behind Mascol Elementary School's field that did not receive approval from the voters. We've talked about other opportunities of adding on to the high school, tearing down the green building and put it there, a couple other options, none of which were really, reached a lot of agreement and were also fairly pricey in terms of what the cost was. So when we looked at this opportunity to purchase the building, the first was to be able to, first of all, secure the property so that it was under the control of the district. So that we own that piece of land so that there is no chance that anything else could go there in terms of another commercial venture or something like that. So we sort of own now this entire complex, which has a lot of intrinsic value. But then the next question is, what do we do with the building? So, and what we're going to start discussing now is what we do with the building. And I think at some point, what we'll probably do is give more details on pictures of the structure, but that current building was used as a, as a, as a school for students that needed special attention, special, not really special needs, but it was a school that had a very specific purpose. There are classrooms inside of it. There's a half-size gym. There's, there's kitchen area inside of it. There's other office area. There's storage area downstairs. So it's a functioning building. But the question then becomes, do we long-term look at that site to be able to solve the SAU and the special education building offices? And if so, what's the timeframe for that to happen? And in between, how can we utilize the building for the purpose of the district to be able to do things that might benefit the district in the interim? Because it is a functioning building and it does have capabilities that are there. So the process is, and the purpose of the discussion tonight, is to start talking about sort of a timeline of what we, as a board, would like to start doing as far as a short-term and a long-term approach. Obviously, we want to work with planning and building to be able to look at the details of what, of what it should be when we do it. It's going to be a conjunction between the board, planning and building, administration through Matt Chevino on the business side to be able to look at different options and stuff. But the idea is to sort of have an open conversation about that path as we go through. There is no, no definitive, preconceived notion of how we go about this. The options could include reconstructing the building to fit our needs. The option could be that we tear the building down. The option could be that we don't do anything there. We use the property for another purpose. That's part of our discussion here. But I think one of the initial discussion parts is to look at it as solving our long-term SAU sped option in the not-too-distant future. So that's sort of my intro into what this is. I don't know if, Gage, from a planning and building perspective, you want to chime in? Because I know that the planning and building hasn't really talked about this yet as a body. There hasn't been, I don't know, was there a tour that was done? So the tour, and do you know how many people were able to go from planning and building?
I believe there was four of us.
Everyone went except Sue Sheridan. So we really had...
I was a little late, so I missed the initial party.
So everyone went through.
I got the bill.
Except for one. So I think that's the most important thing to add on to your opener, is that the, kind of the next step was to make sure that the board had had a chance to see the inside of Brentwood and that the planning and building committee had a chance to see about the inside. Because really, the first was the acquisition of the land of the property, and after that was to come, so what will we do next? So I think it's interesting for you to be able to share what you experienced and what you think it might be based on what you saw. Because I think it's an interesting structure and I think a lot of persons really don't even see it when they drive down McKelwain, you know? Because we even said to our staff when we were doing our opening this year, "We live in the green. There's the blue house across the street. There's a white house behind us. We're in the land of houses and on the diagonals, it's a red house." And that's what people think in the district. We're all named by house. So I think it really is one of those properties that just hasn't really been acknowledged. And it's also important to point out that over time, there was a center structure and then there were add-ons to the structure. So that also makes it interesting. We've talked about that when we went through it, that it's just not one entire structure, but it's these structures with add-ons. Each one has its own system of heating and cooling. That makes kind of for an interesting dwelling. And so I'm very interested to hear what you thought upon your initial inspection.
Just one question really quick. So has Brandy ever been in the building?
Ah, I miscue. And one tour to be had.
We, as a board, toured it when Michael was there because we toured it before when we were considering whether to buy. So she has not seen it, so I think she needs the 50-cent tour at some point, just so she's aware of it, so.
Well, okay. I'm, it's all...
Yeah.
Done this before.
Gage is all that. I'm in his seat technically right now.
It's kind of weird sitting over here for a change.
It is.
Yeah. Marge, exactly what you've said. The building is, is interesting, to say the least. It's a rambling farmhouse that's been added on to and added on to and added on to. So more, you know, to me surprisingly is that, you know, like the room, you got a fireplace in there, which is, it's nice, little addition, but I'm not so sure in its present state it's going to meet much need. Certainly, the infrastructure is going to be challenging at best where you don't have any, you don't have a single attic or you don't have a single basement. So you can go down and look at it now and all the utilities are run, you know, along the gutters and eaves and, you know, drilled into the building. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge to make it usable for anything, anything large, or certainly for any real infrastructure. It's, I don't know, it's, we've got some work to do. So I guess what I'd like to do is, so there's two pieces to this. There's the short-term and the long-term. And I had an initial thought that I'm going to throw on the table since we're sort of having this open discussion. I think that we, as a district, need to take a serious look at that property to see what it would take to address the SAU sped and the, you know, the sort of that problem. And I know that Matt had a proposal that one of the architects drew up about how you could just reconstruct the building with existing footprint, fix what's there. There's some part to tear down and stuff. I know there was a figure attached to it. But I think, my personal opinion is, is that we, between the board and administration, as well as planning and building, need to take a look at all the different options for that property and see what makes sense. I personally believe that trying to rush that and get it done for getting on this April's ballot might be a little bit of a push because not only do we have to look at all the different options, but then we have to be able to, to make the, come up with a plan that makes the voting population very comfortable with what we're doing, to explain we look at all the different options and stuff. So, so my thought is, and what I want to throw out for conversation, is that we look at this to start to come up with a timeline for a proposal so that we can put it in front of the voters in April of 2020. And in the interim, also come up with a plan, working with administration, of what kind of programs or opportunities we can utilize that building for, for the next two school years, the remainder of this one as well, whether we can use it for after-school programs or evening education, what we would need to do to be able to utilize that structure in its current format without major changes, obviously, to be able to utilize it as a space that we can have function for whatever the school district might need. So that's, I'd like to sort of throw that out as an initial discussion point. I'd like to get the board to kind of chine in on this because this is sort of our open table conversation here, right? So.
Go ahead, please.
So I think the notion of waiting and doing it very well, if it takes until 2020, so be it. Because I think it's more than just, are we going to go and be in the red house? Let's call it the red house. And that would be 20 people going there. Currently, in the greenhouse, there are 12 of us. But if we take Nancy and her two administrative assistants from the high school and then the people in the blue house, that would end up being 20. And I think it would be important for us to go back to the original drawing that was done and take a look at the space that was talked about and perhaps do some reconfiguration. Because one of the things that we realized is that we're not going to have a room dedicated to professional development. We said, "We don't need that. We need a big, a bigger room in order to have leadership team meetings and that kind of thing." But do you remember, we talked about reconfiguration of space, that when all was said and done, we could have a smaller footprint. So I think we need to go back to the table and take a look at that. In the same... of thing. But do you remember, we, we talked about reconfiguration of space, that when all was said and done, we could have a smaller footprint. So I think we need to go back to the table and take a look at that. In the same breath, I think people would expect that we would be able to say what's going to happen to the greenhouse and the blue house, so that when it's put out there, it's the, the plan, and it speaks to all the dwellings. And, it might also be that the front of the high school has a reconfigured parking allotment as well. Because that's come up, about the front of the high school, and how people come and go, and, and so on. So, the whole area needs to be looked at, so that it's well-thought-out, and people see it's well-thought-out. It's just not one puzzle piece, it's like 10 puzzle pieces. And I do think it was interesting, because one of the things that Gage said to me, is he was asking me to envision space, and I told him, "This is not one of my skill sets. I'm not good at going in and looking at this," as he would put it, "kind of a rambling farmhouse," and be able to look at it and say, "Oh, I see this, and this, and this." It's just not something I can do. So, I would welcome us having someone who does that too, for their living, to be able to look at this and say, "You know, it is just not worth renovating because of," list all the reasons, "and in fact, you need to reconstruct," or whatever, "and then look at a better utilization of space." Because that's what we've all come to, is whatever we do has got to be done well, and it's got to last a very long time. I mean, we're talking about a 50-year, you know, given that we've been in this now, like 50 years, we, we just need to make sure that whatever we do, we don't have to undo and redo, that this is going to stand the test of time. So, I would want us to put into it whatever it takes, to get it well-thought-out, and people can look and say, "This all makes sense to me, what you're doing." Because it's step-by-step-by-step. And we didn't even talk really about that, blue and green and parking. But it's, it's really, you've talked about parking before too, at the high school. So it's like looking at that whole area.
When you, when you look at the blue and greenhouse, the, the moment you move out of those, there's not a lot of value there.
The blue one especially, because it's, it's got issues.
Right. You know, you've probably, we've probably spent more on repairs than those were actually built for originally. And there's just not, there's not a lot of value there.
We gave news the bottom floor of the blue building after Superstorm Sandy.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, so you've got some, you've got some mold, you know, remediation issues, and I mean, they're not, yeah.
Yeah. The other thing is interesting, that I don't think any of us realized until we got ready to close on the property, is that the, the red building, the Brentwood building, in its current structure, the very back corner of the building actually touches the property line of the house next to it, so.
Has anyone seen the deed? Do you have the deed?
I haven't seen a copy of the deed, but, I actually have seen a copy of the deed, yes. And Meridian, who did the, Meridian, Keach Nordstrom, sorry Steve, Keach Nordstrom, who did the, did the site survey, did, did look at the deed and everything like that.
I mean, not, not that the GIS system is all that accurate, but it certainly doesn't look like it's an issue on the GIS, so I'd just like to really see.
Yeah, the GIS is not accurate at all. They, they went by the, the deed, and then traversed up from known boundaries to get to, to the point where the building is six inches from the abutters property, in one location.
Right. And the, my understanding is the fence is actually on the abutters property the way it is, but it's grandfathered in just because of, of the, the time. But if you look at a picture of it, the building sits a little cockeyed on the property based on the way it is. So, there is, I mean, we need to look at all the different options, and what the impact would be if we, if we renovated the building on the existing footprint, whether there's any issues with, with, with the fact that we were so close to the property line as the existing easement, or granted, does that carry over? I mean, those, those are all the questions that we have to battle with, right?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, before we touch anything, that's, you've got to make sure. Because the minute you disturb it, you have the potential, like now you have to bring it all up the code, so you may just.
Exactly.
Would that be, and I just asked this, would that be a question that you would like me to ask?
Well, I think, so, so I guess the thing is, is that, what I'd like to do, I'll speak for myself. I want the board to talk, to first of all, agree that the timeline sounds appropriate, to take our time to look at it, and to brainstorm some ideas on how to use the building. I think that we need to engage with planning and building, and have you to sit and talk about the different options as we look at it for an SAU sped alternative, and then give you maybe a laundry list of things to go look at. Because right now, we could think of a couple on the fly, but I'd rather do it more formally through, through more public planning and building meetings, and you involved, and stuff like that, so. But that's just me.
Cinda?
I mean, one place I think to start would be really the formal requirements that we have, and make sure that the requirements for the space are all there, and it's agreed upon by everyone at this table in planning and building. So, the use cases, you know, what are the use cases, you know, that would happen in that building, what we would need to accommodate for, what we might want to think about for future, you know, just anything that might come about, increase in staff, or not, to a certain, so there's a little bit of a buffer in some regard. But I would say, what's that document that's really kind of driving everything else that happens? So, you know, the requirements we have for the space, then we have something we can give to a contractor, or whatnot, that can help us fit that in, maybe ask some questions, maybe that's a work in progress for a little while, what that document's like, and then move to what our options are.
And I think, to get to the superintendent's point, there was a document that outlined the, the need, the size of the space, the rooms and stuff. We need to go back and look, see if that's still valid or not. I mean, it's, it is a few years old. I mean, this has been cooking in one form or another for, what, 10 years, or eight years?
More.
More than, a while.
Longer than I've been on the board, right? So I think...
Planning and building '05, it was still relevant, yeah.
And what are the use cases that surround it?
Right, no, exactly. You know, what do we want to use the conference rooms for? I mean, I know originally it had some bigger use, and then we reduced it down. So, I think the idea is, this is a perfect opportunity for a good back-and-forth, consistent feedback process with planning and building, to say, "This is what we're looking, what do you, is the board think?"
I think the, one of the original reports we did too, was during the time when we were in a little bit of an upswing, population-wise. So, if you look at all the, all the new homes going in, and developments going in, you know, multi-home developments going in right now, and we've got a huge one going in down by Homestead, you've got some, you know, we're going to start seeing something.
So, in, in other words, when, when you do the planning, you got to bring the, the regional planning guys back in, like they came to us, what, a year ago, or whenever it was? No, they came recently, it was like in the last year, I think, where they talked about the ones that are coming. But anyway.
There's the school board being before the elec, before.
Right. Oh, well, anyway, but, but with all the, the plans, I think, having the planning and building hear that as well to do it. I want the planning, this is a challenge, I want the planning and building to have formal meetings, I'd love to have them recorded, because I think it adds to the transparency. I know that there's this tradition with planning and building and recording.
We like wearing shorts, okay?
Yeah, well, anyway.
We'll get you table skirts.
Yeah, but, but anyway, the idea, I think the idea is, is we really want to make sure this is really transparent for the voters, and for us, and everybody else, to make sure we have this.
All the meetings we have are public, so.
I, well, I know, I know, I agree.
Well, I think, you know, and I, I'm just going to play on Andy's point, because I, I've been in agreement since I've been on planning and building in '05 again, which shows my age. But, I think a lot of what our constituency does is come back to us, based on what they see in recordings, and also our minutes are done pretty quickly. So with those two things said, that they're posted very quickly, that there's a very quick access, reasonable access for, for content. And the board's going to be deliberating on these things. We would love to see, you know, how the deliberations go, so we can understand the context of, of, you know, what your thought processes are, when, when the projects actually come to our table. So I am in agreement with you there, and have them for a very long time. A couple of points I did want to make, up close, because I think we've gone around the circle, but I think we want to kind of tie it in a little bit. I'm going to start at the beginning. When we did buy this property, or asked to buy this property from the voters, this was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Even though we're talking about whether it's the right building, it's definitely the right site. The site went for a valuation of $1.1 million, we got it for $275,000. That doesn't happen twice in a lifetime. So, it's still what I would call a, a very good investment by our community, that they entrusted us with this property, and I think we'll do great things with it, regardless of the end result. We know we're going to keep a focus and a purpose, to making sure that our student services and our administrative offices have the facilities they need to be productive and compliant. So those are things that we want to do, and comfortable. That's not always been the case with some of the facilities we've offered for, for those two buildings. And to offer a place that has great opportunity for student evaluations, and testing, and things that we've always wanted to do in that building, that haven't been able to happen for years, because either was ADA not compliant, or because the facilities were obviously infested with mold. I mean, when we're talking about these things, this is why we're having this conversation. To that end, I do think, Andy, you're right on this as well, I think that we should set a goal for a date, that we would have it voted on in the April 2020 election. And that gives us a timeline of formulating a needs assessment, formulating a facilities assessment, and then formulating a plan to bring to the voters about how we're going to responsibly utilize this investment that we just made. So that's, that's my, my kind of two cents on it. But with that, there's definitely some short-term need, we know that we can fill in with this facility. I think as a board, we're very good about picking the right people to run our district. And with that, as they see the need to use a facility, I expect that they would use it as such. So if they do have a need presented, that we will, we will use it accordingly. And as those, those facilities are being used, you know, we can absolutely talk about how they're being used, and the benefit to the district. So as we're formulating our formal plans, this is also transparent, that these might be needs we need to continue with, in the long-term or short-term, so. Because I know that special services definitely has some things that they cannot do in their building, that maybe this building will help them to do in the short-term, while we're, we're formulating long-term. So, why does it seem like we're talking kind of in circles? Because we had to jump on a property while it was available, get it to the voters and vote on it, or else it wouldn't have been here, as we speak today. It would have been in the hands of, of a different entity, or out on the market, just not available to us in the future. So, Matt, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yes, I did. The, the good news is, is on the engineering report, we had Brian Hanson from Team Engineering here, and he gave us a timeline. And for the, for the next year, the immediate year, there's nothing major that really has to be done to that building in order to maintain it as it is. There's no looming repairs that were identified. So you do have that year of utilization without any extra cost or repairs, that major repairs that have to be done. So, that's on your side.
Excellent. That's, that's a very good point. Thank you, Matt. So, I'm sorry? Okay. Okay, I didn't know whose hand was up, so, okay, Cinda?
I mean, I think from a short-term perspective, I think there's a few things that we could do with it. Like, I mean, one idea would be the adult education, you know, where if we could open that up for adult education classes, you know, it may save even having to open up the whole high school, or whatever, that you could, you know, leave a couple doors, you know, for something like that, if that's a possibility. I think you had mentioned, like the after-school kind of stuff, maybe...
Yeah, with the gym that's in there, right?
Yeah, or the, like tutoring. I know there's a number of parents, I see a lot of parents, you know, trying to get tutors for their kids, and you know, sometimes they meet at the library, sometimes they come to their homes, or whatever, but maybe it could be a place where tutoring arrangements could happen as well, just an idea. Or, I don't know, if there's a place where kids would want to practice their instruments, you know, like, you know, if there's maybe some, you know, drums, trombones. And then, I don't know if we can use it for other district meeting spaces. So, you know, if you need to get, there were some areas that were kind of larger in area, so maybe there's a, you know, if you have subgroups or committees, it seems like the conference space in the district is very limited, when you start looking for a place that can accommodate for, like, the communications committee, or some of the larger meetings that happen, that we, you know, could happen. So it could be a, a district meeting place too, on the short-term. If we could set it up in a way that would, you know, be useful and functional with the existing space, then I would say we should definitely use it.
Particularly in the spring, when your fields aren't ready. You know, during MYA, we were always trying to look for a gym, so, you know.
We've got one.
Yeah, well.
Sort of.
Not the size of this room, but...
It's a thing you don't think about, you know, I, I had Unines in, you know, throwing the crossballs around, I didn't even have space. I'm not going to throw it very far, so that's a, that's a perfect space.
There you go. So, on that, I think the next steps we have, that we've kind of vetted a little bit publicly, is we want to have a, a plan maybe for a charge with a timeline, at some point, for planning and building. I think that, that helps us, and personally, I love when we have a, a charge with a timeline that has updates, so we kind of know where they're going. So if we have specific steering items, we can steer them back to make sure that we're getting exactly the data that we need to present, as a final, because that's the thing, at the end of the day, we want to have something that's viable to present to the voters. So, my thought is, that, and this is just off the cuff, that we have, I'd say, a good year. And at the end of the year, we're going to have to deal with, you know, communications, planning, touring, anything like that, things that will help us to, to plan for budget season.
So I, let me make sure, so there's planning that will be going on during the next year, so that a year from now, we have a pretty good idea of what we're going to do, and we have that remaining six months as we head into budget season, to do the marketing, to do the promotion, do the tours and all that stuff.
Correct. That would be my personal, and I'm just vetting it, I'm not, I'm not dictating it.
Right. But I think that the interesting, the thing we need to do is, meet with the planning and building, and let them know the approach that we're taking, so that they are on the same page that we are. And then, what I can do for the, I may not be at the next one, but maybe in early, in early October, come up with a potential timeline. So, planning and building can maybe meet sometime in the next month, and I'll come, come with the star horse of a timeline, we can present it at the next, at the meeting on the 1st of October.
Definitely. And we would look for quarterly updates? Would that make sense, the way we do with curriculum?
To start, and it may get more frequent than that, as we get closer.
You bet. So, with that, we just kind of, high level, and as we need to dial it in, we can bring them back at any time, to refine. Does that make sense to all? Excellent.
And also, at the 1st of October meeting, it'd be good if administration came with ideas of how to use the building near-term, you know, sort of socialize it around the district and things.
Right. Taking under advisement, what was said, like from Cinda's point of view, when she talked about adult ed, Laura Bobbitt is the overseer of adult ed, so I certainly would want to give her an opportunity to look at the space, to say, "Does this space better serve your needs than what you're utilizing in the high school, or whatever?" And that same would be true for anyone else. The leadership team really hasn't talked about the Brentwood space since its acquisition. We've kind of been waiting for the board and the planning and building committee to say something before we got into short-term usage. But that will be on our agenda, and so I will come back with some idea of some plans.
Excellent. Cinda?
And I would say also, like reaching out to other town organizations, to see if they might have a use for it in the short-term, like the MYA, or even the town council. I mean, we are one town, and if we have some space that could be used, Park and Recs, you know, anything, I think it's good to just do a little, excuse me, due diligence, and see if there's, you know, anyone else that can use that space in the meantime.
So, and we will have our joint meeting with the councils, so we can absolutely extend those ideas there too, so. And Parks and Rec is Brandy's new gig, so I'm sure she can give us some feedback about what they'll be looking to do, and where that space might come in handy. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think our next meeting is the 24th, the planning and building, I think we're, that's our next viable date. We don't really have, we meet, you know, kind of because of you, so if we have a charge, well, no, I mean, we, we...
Youth of collective.
Yeah, that would be, so that'd be the...
That'd be the 24th.
So, not, so we meet, the school board meets two weeks from yesterday, and you were talking about the Monday after that.
24th?
24th, you're right.
Right, okay. Okay. So, see if, see if Stan, if Stan, if Rich, well, everybody, right? Make sure that that date works, and maybe we can set it up. Who knows, maybe we could have the meeting in the red building, as meeting space. Is there still enough chairs left that we can have a meeting in?
Yeah, there's chairs, yeah.
Maybe that's where we have it, get in the mood.
Nice cool night, we can start a fire.
I'd like to know if that thing's a working fireplace before you do that. Excellent. So, we feel good about the agenda item? Five is good. So, onward and upward. So then we will move on to agenda item number six.
Thank you, Gage.
If we're good, and thank you, Gage, for coming.
Thank you very much.
So, item number six is data security and privacy plan development during the 2018, 2019 school year. So I bring to the table Nancy Rose, who's the director of... So I bring to the table Nancy Rose, who's the Director of, I'm going to get wrong, Library and Technology and Library Services? Media Services.
Technology and Library Media Services.
Library, I knew it was Library, Media, and Technology, but I did not get the order. Planning and Building makes more sense because it's in order. You plan before you build, but with you, you've grown into many things.
Yeah, it's grown.
So welcome, Nancy, and I hope you had a great summer.
Thank you. A busy summer. So I wanted to just get in front of the board with the new law that, it's the House Bill 1612, but it resulted in what is essentially Paragraph Five of RSA 18966, even though I looked up, it's still not, I don't know what the process is to get it added. But essentially, the law says that by June 30th of 2019, the school district needs to, or the local education agency needs to have produced a data insecurity plan that is reviewed and approved by the board. The plan needs to include a full security audit, which is a good thing to do, but it's a very onerous thing to do, especially with a small staff. We need to identify our data types and agree to the categories of the data and what we consider the use of that data. And this is kind of a tricky area, because there's also language in the RSA that says that the state will produce some of this definition, but I, there's nothing that says when. So there's, could be some room to move there, it's hard to say, but there's things like directory information, which is essentially name, address, phone number, things that would be included in a directory. Personally identifiable information takes things a step further, especially if it's secure information, like anything with FERPA, education records, or healthcare, anything that would tie data to an individual. And then there's the role of what is called a school authority, which is when the school district determines that an entity is a school authority because it performs a task on behalf of the district. So Power School acts as a school authority in a way because it maintains our data. Microsoft Office could be considered a school authority because it does the task of producing documents that we request it to produce. And so we have to be very clear about how we define different data types, what we allow vendors to do with that data, how long they keep it, and if their terms of service are in agreement with what we want. And frequently, that's the tail wagging the dog. And this is where there's a lot of different states coming up with privacy laws now, and a lot of it has to do with how much vendors in education are monetizing the data that they're getting out of schools, ad targeting, selling lists off to other, you know, products and things like that. So the law is very well-intended, it's just a big deal to take on. And I wanted to also include, excuse me, I also wanted to mention, the law is partially responsive to FERPA, which is the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act, or I think that that's right. Is that right? I should have memorized it before I got here. But the other one that impacts this is KAPA, which is the law that when you hear about vendors like Facebook or online systems that have student accounts where they have to be 13 or older, if they're 13 or under, they have to have parental permission. So for school districts, when we use a system for students under 13, we are essentially saying that we have secured the parent's approval to use those systems. So while KAPA is the burden of proof of the use of the system and the data is on the vendor, when the person is 13 or younger, and we are the ones saying that this is something that we're doing as a school district, we then have to say that we have secured that parental authority. If they're older, then it is between the parent and the vendor. And when we're doing something that the school is requesting, whether they're 15 years old, it becomes a gray area if something comes up, there's a data breach, and there's different parties that are involved. So if Google were to lose some 15-year-old's information that they did as part of school, there could, there's gray area in there. And I find it, I just will be very candid, it's highly confusing. And I just completed a course offered by COSIN, which is my national security, I'm sorry, certification organization. And a lot of the question was around how these different laws and the school working with students and families, how all of this data interacts and where the legalities fall, and then you throw state law in the middle or local district policies. So it's complex. And then another component of the plan is a full list of software applications, including the terms of use and compliance with standards. So this is getting back to the language, I thought it was interesting, that the language actually said, "The department shall establish minimum standards for privacy and security of student and employee data based on best practices for local education agencies." So it says that this is something that they're going to do, but we have to have a plan in place that you've reviewed and approved by June 30th of next year. So when that comes about, could change what we're planning to do. So that's kind of one of my, an area that I just wanted to be brought up. My group of fellow tech directors for school districts are working on what they were kind of meaning with a statement like that, because it does seem like something will be provided to districts to use, but we're not even a year away from a very comprehensive plan to be developed without those definitions. So we're working on figuring out who to talk to about that, and we meet every month, and there's a subgroup that works on that, but it will be a challenge. And then, the other thing that I thought was a little interesting is that the actual language of the law says a full list of all software applications. It doesn't limit it to those that include student data. So it isn't, if a student goes on, does not have to log in, and they create something and print it out, we would, according to the way the law is written, I would have to have that listed and the terms of use listed, even if I never put in a student's name or any kind of an account. So it's very far-reaching. So we are going to have to have the ability to identify sites and applications and products being used, the terms of service for them, what they're being used for, what the, if there's an account, what the data points are and what they're used for, what the vendors are intending to do with any data that they'd get from us, and screen these applications so that teachers know whether or not it's okay to use them. So I just wanted to raise that, so that as we go into this year, you'll be aware, because we're going to be working on this in the district, and there are still a few unknowns, but then essentially, this will come before you for a review and approval, hopefully, and then an ongoing plan for updating. And I find it personally daunting, because I just think of how many sites and applications come along, and teachers frequently are very innovative and creative, and they see things and they like to use them, and they want to just, this is great, I'd like to use this in the classroom, but this really changes that dynamic. So a lot of education is going to be in play.
Okay. Add Naomi and Cindy.
You actually just touched on the thing that I wanted to ask about. Is your, and I realize this is very early stages in understanding, but so far, is your understanding, then, that any time a teacher would want to use a webpage that has some kind of interactive component, it would fall under this?
I think so, because it says "software applications," and, let's see. All software applications, digital tools, and extensions. That's very inclusive. That's iPad apps, flashcard utilities that you don't log into. It's very inclusive.
So I think that part of this is going to be the importance of planning ways for teachers to work with that, because that sounds pretty stifling, if we don't find out a way to, I don't know, pre-approve a bunch of stuff or have some kind of process that will allow that.
Well, and there's software solutions that will do some of that pre-vetting against, so if you, and I haven't played with these directly, but we've talked about that there are some of these now developing, of course, there's a product coming along. But, so if we were to decide upon agreed terms of service that we require, then different sites could be screened by this application to say, this complies, this does not. And then at that's a point where you could say, if it doesn't comply, how do we get them to comply? This is a big area for vendors, too, because they want to be in schools, they want to be used as part of education, but they have to be willing to play and negotiate and work with schools on their terms, where probably for the last 10, 15 years, that really has never been asked of them, except for maybe by some of the largest, you know, school districts, like in major, huge metropolitan areas. So they're being asked to think differently about how they interact with customers, especially small. And New Hampshire, because we don't have a state organization that's going to figure this out on our behalf, every district is going to be negotiating this, so.
It'll be interesting to see how that evolves over the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Evolves is a good word.
Cindy?
Nancy just touched on a little bit of my question, but is it something that the New Hampshire School Board Association can help with? Because this is pretty complex stuff, and, you know, to have everyone kind of reinvent the wheel and, you know, kind of put forward, and I work with health data, you know, for work, and usually when you have these kind of policies and procedures, you have, you know, lawyers that are looking at them and things like that. So, I mean, I would just say if that's something that, you know, this, that could be provided to our district or others, it'd be good, you know, to reach out to see if there's a, some kind of a coordination that can happen.
Whenever there's a change in law that affects the delivery of education, the HSB does, it's best to provide a sample policy that is the framework, and sometimes even down to the letter, just really is appropriate and what to use for a district. So, you know, we've done a lot of editing at our table and reviewing, but a lot of it started with an HSB sample policy, which means that's a lot of legal hours we don't have to invest in that comes with our membership. So I do have a board meeting on the 19th and an executive meeting on the 10th, so that will be coming up in my discussions. So, and they do, they do regular legislative updates as well. So as things go, come into play or are going to be impacting our districts, they're always very good about providing legislative updates on what to prepare for, what you need to get ready for, and if there's a sample policy, they'll have in the newsletter or something to click, click to review. So, but we will, I will see if that's already being worked on. Thank you. So are there any other questions on this fun and exciting topic with data security? I'm sure you're so, libraries sound so much more fun right now. Do decimal system, the old days, where we didn't have to worry about this stuff, right?
Actually, it's a little geeky. I did this work at my previous life, so.
Well, welcome back to your previous life.
Thank you.
We will leverage that. Excellent. So we are going to keep Nancy here and move on to Item Number Seven, which is the preliminary discussion regarding communication strategies for the 2018-2019 school year. So Nancy's staying as the Chair of the Communications Committee. We do have Cindy, who is our liaison to that. We have, at times, had a second, so if Brandy, if your schedule permits at points, we'd love to have you involved, knowing you are a communications consultant. It's kind of like having a ringer. We do like having ringers at our table. So to that end, we definitely think that there's a lot more development we can do. But Nancy, I know that you've been chairing, so if you want to give kind of where we've been, where we're at now, and then we can talk about where we may need to go.
So that when we initially formed, which I think was about a year and a half ago, am I correct, or two years ago, we did an initial survey of parents to try to just get a sense of what people were hoping to see regarding communication. And it was kind of broad and included the use of Power School, use of the district website, use of email, did they hear from teachers, did they feel like they were aware of what was going on in the schools, just to kind of bring in information. And it was very helpful. It gave us some initial fodder to work with. We came to be very aware of the issues around transitioning between schools, especially because we go from pre-K to four for all, you know, the three schools, and then they transition into a two-year program, a two-year program, and then off to a four-year. And there's a lot of change in there. So there was a lot of confusion just around logistics. And then internal discussion helped us realize that especially for students with extra needs for learning supports, that some of those transitions could be particularly difficult, and we needed to focus on those areas. Of course, Power School and keeping Power School up to date was an issue, it was cited very heavily. That's where the work that Mark has been doing with both the Report Card Committee and also with the middle and high school to look at Power School and how grades are put into the system. So there's been some work done there. And then just in general, it was agreed that we're not very efficient with the communication that we do or consistent. And so as we were thinking through this, we came to sort of a realization that we needed to kind of pick where we're going. I think of Yogi Berra a lot, if you don't know where you're going, you're going to get there. So, and I know that was wrong. But, so we started crafting what it would mean, what is the vision for communication for the Merrimack School District as brought forth by the committee. So we drafted a vision statement and some goals, and then that went to the leadership team last year, and we kind of worked with it. It had been a bulleted list, and it had been trying to capture the different layers, because the complexity of it is we're communicating the good things that happen in schools, the initiatives, the plans, you know, the, I was just thinking about what we were just talking about with the Brentwood building, and emergencies, and short-term emergencies, the buses are running a little late. You know, there's so many different facets of communication, and, you know, and then down to the parent-teacher level. And trying to figure out what our goals are across the board for all of those things, and to make sure that it's as two-way as possible, so that people feel heard and that they've been represented. So the vision statement that we got to in April is in the packet, and then the goals there are to try to just define what it is that we see being put in place that would help us realize that vision. And this is kind of where I think it gets a little tricky, because as a committee, we can make recommendations, but we don't run operations in buildings. We don't have a communication person that works at either the district or at the building level. So we're frequently depending on people who have this, maybe it's because they work in a front office, or maybe it's because they do the webmaster for that building. Rarely would all of these different things be done by the same person. So then there's the issue of coordination and staying on top of it. So there's a lot of challenges to it, but I think if we can come up with sort of the plan and the goals that we strive for, then over the course of the next year or so, we can start to say, here are things that will move us in those directions. At the leadership retreat, we had a lot of discussion around communication, and how do we make sure people know, especially, and this was Mark's point, after we vote, I mean, we just got full-day kindergarten, so what? So what do we report back to the community, and how do we let them know about where that's going? And the redevelopment of the Brentwood Building is another fantastic opportunity to show growth in the district and innovation and opportunities to change, you know, some of our ability to deliver service. And then we're, you know, we have the meetings where people come to the school board to present what's happening at the different schools, which is really cool, but on an ongoing, regular basis, to know that kids in the third grade are doing some great, big, integrated project, and just to share that with families would be, in a regular way, would be a nice thing for us to do. But it's coming up with that agreement to that, and then a system to make sure that it's doable in a way that isn't too burdensome or, you know, just overwhelming, I guess, for either side. So that's kind of where we are. I just worked on reconvening the committee for this coming school year to, and maybe to do another survey, to target maybe more into how is it that people would like to be communicated with. I think another factor, we did the survey two years ago, and I would say that within the last two years, how people work with different kinds of social media has changed in two years. And I find the Nixle feature that you sign up for to get updates from the police stations that's a text, I think that's highly valuable. It's very quick. I know immediately that there was an accident on DW Highway and to avoid that area, I don't have to click, I don't have to follow through, it's just a very quick way to get information, and it kind of just goes into the back of my head, and then if I need it, I know where I found it. So I wouldn't have dreamed of using something like that two or three years ago, and now it's something that's very handy and useful. So people are used to these things, and they've changed tremendously in a very short amount of time, and I think they're looking for us to be providing more information in ways that's delivered the way they want it, in bite-sized pieces that they can then go back to when they want to look into something more. So we've got some challenges in front of us, because this is not territory we've been in before, and it's also tricky as a public entity to do that. So, I mean, I think that that's worth saying. But I think it's, I think we have great opportunity to share, we do a lot of really good things in the schools, and I think... good things in the schools, and I think people would like to know more about it.
Right. And I think to that end, especially when you talk about Nixle, and that's something that, you know, I think is more of a police platform than a community platform.
Yeah, it's usually police in town.
It'd be lovely to have an equivalent for our families, but things that are needed are more data from our parents. We do have parents in our district, and we've talked about this at the table, that don't have an email or a cellphone on record, so we can't do blasts to them. We cannot elicit, like, if we're closing school, if we had to, if we had an emergency shutdown, if we had, you know, if we had to do a lockdown for any reason, that, you know, if they're not on those platforms, they're hearing about it from their kids when they get home. And that's not what we want. I know we talked at the board when we were developing the communications committee about just a child's education, and how when we talk about our curriculum, whether you're in a fourth-grade classroom at Thornton's Ferry, Reed's Ferry, or Mastrola, you're going to have the same curriculum delivered with unique touches on how it's delivered to make it a personal teacher-student experience. However, it's the same curriculum. And to that end, I think when you're talking about communication, grade to grade to grade, consistency is going to be beneficial. We want a consistent platform, we want, we know where to go to find X, where to find my child's upcoming homework, where to find my child's grades is obviously what Power School is, but, you know, where to find the events that are happening with my child's class, it may not be district-wide, that would be relevant for me to know. So, if they're having, say, a presenter come in, you know, that they know what day it is, make sure that they're wearing the right clothes. If it's the owl guy, don't wear your finest, those kinds of things. So, with that consistency, so we all know where to go to find what we want, to get what we need. And I think that when we first started talking about that, I had middle schoolers, so, and I have a sophomore and a junior now, but when I looked at the teams, there were some teams that had teams websites, you know what projects were coming up, you know what teacher assignments there were. It was like one touch, and you could know what's going on and help your child. And then there are those that had nothing. And so, you weren't getting the same level of even ability to support. So, you know, when you're talking about consistency, knowing that you're going in, in grade seven and grade eight, it could be night and day, you know, what you had, you expected it because your grade seven child had this great site, grade eight, there's nothing. So, knowing you have a consistent ability to get information, where to find it, what you're going to get in that information, having that structure, I think, will be very good, because the only way to effectively communicate is to set expectations of what information they can get. And I think that can start in kindergarten and evolve with the evolution of content. But just knowing, you know, where we're at and how every teacher kind of does their own thing in the way they communicate what they do can be a challenge to parents, which means that they have the challenge of supporting and being on top of things. So, you know, that's something that I think, you're not going to be the one delivering that, but from, you know, feedback from parents is, some know what's going on easier than others. Why is that?
I agree.
So, on that note, you know, that's definitely something, I think, from a board perspective, that's what started this communication committee in the first place. But I think what people want to know evolved. What we want from the community is feedback, a constructive portal for feedback. That's evolved. When we present a budget of seventy-plus million dollars, seventy-five million dollars, I'd rather not feel I was doing it in a bubble. I'd rather feel there was a place for constructive conversations about the budget, so we can get appropriate questions. And we have email that no one uses, we have phones that no one uses. But at the end of the day, when people are disappointed in the budget we present, we did it without any proactive data about what they were expecting and what they were, you know, what, you know, so we could either be able to meet those expectations, or we can talk about the consequences of what those expectations would be. So, sometimes we can't accommodate, but we can at least communicate why it's appropriate to bring forth the budget that we have and not maybe what they're looking for. But we don't have that. We get the feedback three months later when their tax bills come, in a very non-constructive way that does not bring us where we want to go and does not give us ideas of what they were looking for and didn't get. So, these are the communication challenges, I think, as a board we have, as a board who are parents, who are surrounded by parents have, I'm not using the gavel, it was just a mistake. So, on that note, I think there's a lot that this communications committee can do to facilitate that conversation and bring ideas. You know, surveys are obviously the way to go to get those ideas fostered, but I think we need to get a strong start, we need a consistent approach to being able to evolve in our communications, because again, you know, we're always striving to do better, which means we keep having to work. We can't, you know, we can't take time off from that. So, for us, you know, we're looking forward to what that committee work's going to be this year. Oh, Mark?
So, just to play off what you just said, Shannon, which I really, I have to say, I agree with, and you certainly have been a really big catalyst for our thinking about this issue. But in the vision statement, I would just draw people's attention to the vision statement because it purposely uses some words that I think are meaningful. For instance, "in partnership with families and the community." So, we discuss that because I think it's fair to say that communication is a two-way street. A lot of the dialogue has to do with how, you know, the district can do a better job pushing information, and certainly we can, and that's our responsibility and our obligation. And it is also, to make communication work, there have to be, there has to be a willingness to, you know, share constructive feedback through, you know, the mechanisms that are available or that can be made available so that suggestions can be, you know, acted upon. So, I just would draw people's attention to the idea of partnership. And then creating a foundation of trust and meaningful relations. That was not intended to be just, you know, happy words. That's really intended to suggest that the community deserves to have a relationship with their schools where they can trust the information, and it's not just, you know, supposed to just only talk about the good things, but a lot of good things happen. But the trusting relationship, you know, again, is kind of a two-way sort of thing. And so, I guess this is an invitation, if I could say, to really, you know, engage in a really proactive, positive, you know, forward-thinking communication with the people who we really owe a lot to, which is the education of their children. And I guess I just would point out that it's, I guess the point I'm really making is that for that to ideally work, it goes both ways, both push out and then share constructively the things that are concerning to you in a timely way that it can be addressed, you know, as you pointed out, after the fact isn't as helpful as before, and so on. So, anyway, I think the vision statement is intended to try to shepherd that thinking along the lines that you were describing.
Thank you. Is there any other feedback on communication? Andy?
I just thought I'd note that I realized for the first time today that the school district has a Facebook page. Maybe I'm the only person on the planet that didn't know that, but just sharing. Yeah. Look for Merrimack School District in Facebook, and you can find it. So...
And after you, I posted something on the water filtration system on there, and Andy wasn't aware that we had a Facebook page, so I says, "Yes, here's the link." And so, after, through his vast network kingdom of Facebook...
I shared it on three other forums.
Followers, we received almost 3,000 people reached, we got 92 likes, and we got 24 little heart things, which means I guess they like it, you know?
They really, really, really like it.
They really, really love it. And we've got tons of comments from a lot of people out there. And getting back to the email piece that Nancy had mentioned, in years past, the amount of emails that we had from parents were a little bit lower than this year. I had just...
Addresses. You mean email addresses?
Email addresses, thank you. And so, this year, I did a count a few days ago. Well, I didn't do a count, Luda did a count.
So, it's accurate.
Yeah, so it's accurate.
Sorry, I had to do it, sorry.
She would never do, you know, I make mistakes, she does not make mistakes. So, you know, she said we're like the 94% level at like each school. So, reaching parents with valid email addresses is a lot more feasible than it was in the past. I remember we were doing a survey, and we did an email blast out, and we realized some schools were here, some schools were there. Now, all schools are right here. So, that's something that we can leverage to our advantage, plus Andy's social network that promoted our Facebook page.
Right. And I'm just going to preface, those social media networks are invitation pages, they are private pages, so you have to be allowed in by a moderator, and they also control the content. So, if they don't like what you said, they take it down. So, that's not what I would call transparency and open communication, but it's good that, you know, it worked out, but that's not what I would call accessibility to the masses. So, we have to be very careful about what those pages are actually designed to do, and they're private citizens moderating it to their will and their expectations.
But I think the point I was trying to make is, I'm on the school board, I'm really tech-savvy, I didn't know we had a Facebook page for the school district. So, there's an opportunity to promote in whatever forum, methodology...
Absolutely.
Forget the forums, that one exists, because the one we've got's not listed. I mean, my whole point in promoting what you posted was to raise awareness. I mean, yes, I post them in closed forums that I happen to be members of, but they tell two friends who tells two friends, so we've sort of got a little bit of information. But I think it is an example of how we can create things, but if they're not promoted or understood or advertised, they go unnoticed.
Yeah. And perhaps in conversation, that would lead me, seeing that we have a lot of emails, the majority of emails, to perhaps, you know, talk to Marge and Mark and Nancy, and to see if it would be feasible to put out an email to all parents to promote that page and give them the link, just like I gave Andy the link. Perhaps that would help.
Okay, I see. Brandy and Cindy?
So, I first want to say that I think it's fantastic that our school district values communication the way that it does, and is even having this type of discussion surrounding communication and how we can reach our parents and make sure that everybody is on the same page relative to their child's experiences within their school district. Two things come to my mind as I'm listening, and the first is that communication is something that even adults genuinely struggle with at times. It's not anything that can be, there's no written rule for if I say this, it's going to be received for exactly what I communicated it to be, or there's always, you know, a lack of control for what somebody is going to say in response to my words. That being said, I'm a big believer in over-communicating. I'm not in control of what everybody may or may not think once I speak or once a piece of communication is released, but at least I did my best to put that piece of communication out there. I think we have a lot of opportunity for growth relative to our communications in various areas, and I think what works for K through four might not necessarily work for our high school years. The transition years might require us to help our parents as they adjust with our children. It's hard, you know, this is a big transition year for two of mine, and it's, you know, when you're going through those transition years, you really do depend on that over-communication philosophy that, you know, somebody's going to help me understand so I can help my child better. I would love to participate in the communications committee, and I would love to truly push as much information out as we can, because we are a really great community. We have done incredible things that even I've learned in my short tenure here. It's been, you know, eye-opening, and even what the budget committee does, I think there's just so much that goes into what we're putting in our budgets, what we're putting in, you know, the lunchroom, what we're putting in the education process for the curriculum as well as the actual classroom itself. I, as a parent, am not as well-versed in what we offer as I would like to be. As a community member, I too would say that there is some significant opportunities for growth in understanding what our school district offers, all levels, because I'm only aware of my bubble at this point. So, I'm first very thankful for all that you guys have done, Cindy, you as well. I think it's a great conversation to continue, and if there's anything that I can do to help support, please let me know, because I do think that there's, the momentum is created, and I would love to be a part of the continuing element.
Check your email.
Back down. Cindy?
But I think, you know, herein lies the challenge, is, you know, people want to be communicated in different ways, and in a lot of places, struggle with that. You know, whether you are a bank, a health insurance company, a public entity, people have their preferences, people have their limits on their access to communication. So, I think more to what, you know, Brandy was saying is, you know, try to get the message out there and, you know, through a variety of different ways, try to tailor it best for what your, I guess, constituency is, or, you know, what the stakeholders are, was probably a better word. But at the end of the day, that is the biggest challenge, is that, you know, how do you get information out there, how is it received, in the different modes of getting the transportation, I mean, the communication out there, so.
On that note specifically, in the survey, it was interesting to see that we had people who wanted to receive everything in email and people who wanted that information to never be delivered by email. And that's the challenge that we're up against, is, you know, if you don't go on social media, then Facebook or Twitter or anything like that won't help you. If you, like, my personal email account is essentially just ads. It's so hard to filter out the useful things from that, so it's very hard to make sure that I'm catching the stuff that I'm supposed to catch. And I'm doing this, and I'm finding that there's a lot of noise that comes to me, even from some of the, you know, from the Power School bulletin, if it's not fresh, I know that last week it said the same thing five days in a row, I get that that's not worth opening and looking at, but then on that sixth day, it might be critical, and then I've missed it. So, being a parent in the district and a, you know, a customer of this process as well as trying to help improve it, it's very, very challenging, and people have demonstrated that they have very strong opinions about, you know, what we do and how we do it. And so, that's, I think, the other part of it, is that as we go forward, recognizing that it's an ongoing, iterative, tuned process, that we do our best to try to help as many people as we can, but we won't be able to please everybody.
And, I mean, we operate on public funds, too, so we don't have staff dedicated, you know, 100% of their time to this. People are doing it as a little part of what they do, and I think that's also a challenge, is being able to not only communicate internally and how those consistencies can happen, but to be able to really come up with internal plans with a limited budget, you know, in, you know, with public funds, you know, I think is also a challenge in our situation. And then, lastly, I was just going to speak to the, to what Nancy said, well, a couple, two more things, to what Nancy said overall. I mean, basically, those were the themes that have come out of the last couple of years. The survey went out, and I recall, you know, a lot of it was about the consistency and expectations of communication. They finally get used to expecting communication one way, they go to a different school, it comes a different way, or they look on the website, and one school here is different in another school. So, there was a lot of those kinds of themes that came out and feedback from parents. And then, as Facebook, so our Facebook account, do we have comments turned off on that, on the district one? We don't have, we don't, discussions don't happen on that Facebook page?
No, it's just, you can leave a comment, and that's about it. There's no back and forth.
Okay.
I'm not an expert on it, but there's got to be a way to turn comments off, but the comments that were left...
Because we don't want to be in a situation where we're moderating... Because we don't wanna be in a situation where we're moderating and things like that.
I don't wanna get into a replying situation.
But pushing out some, you know, little mini press releases, if you will, or, you know, pieces of information, I think can be very constructive. And I think these are some things that the communications committee can work on this year. I think also to Nancy's point, it is a move, on top of the, all the challenges, it is a moving target. You know, technology is evolving so quickly. People are adapting in different ways so quickly. So that's another one of our challenges. So it's certainly not an easy undertaking and, you know, in, I think that was, the first year was really a lot about just absorbing the massive amount of opportunities, but also where to focus our time. Where, the second year more of the mission and that kind of thing. So I think, you know, whatever we do to move in a good direction that's positive for the district is good, but we certainly can't tackle everything all at once. It would be almost an impossible feat to be able to do that. But I'm very appreciative of Nancy's leadership in that committee. I think she's serving the entire district and community well through doing it. So I'm looking forward to what we do this year and how we can continue to drive improved communication within our district.
Excellent. Naomi?
This partly relates and partly doesn't, so the part that doesn't, we can put aside for later. But it occurs to me that something that might be useful as part of this, if it's a fit for the committee, is the reasons why certain things are chosen and certain things are not. With the sheer number of ways that one can communicate right now, there's always going to be people who say, well, why aren't you using X? Why don't you use Snapchat for your bulletin? So things like that.
Why don't you look like a bunny using Snapchat?
So I think it may become more and more important for us to have reasoned responses to why something was taken off the table at the same time and why there are certain limits that we put around it. That might be worth keeping in mind.
I appreciate that. That's, I mean, it's very, it's, it's actually a lot of what we talked about around emergency communication specifically, which is establishing what we will do and why. And, you know, so in the, in the case of emergency communication, the primary situation, the, the primary goal is to make sure that the situation is handled, that kids are and teachers are safe and that those things are dealt with, and to keep people informed with information that's accurate and as timely as it can be. So that means that you can't necessarily launch off on a declaration of there's a leak, you know, before you know anything. And then people used to instant information are frustrated, well, why didn't you, da-da-da-da-da? And so we talked about setting those expectations and this is another extension of that, setting the expectations around what we aim to do and will do and why we might not do this other thing. So, no, I appreciate that very much.
Brandy?
So I, I don't know who put the Merrimack School District app together, but this is one of my favorite go-tos that...
Hi!
Awesome. The reason why I bring this one...
With Mark Murrayfield and Luda.
Okay.
So, yes, I just wanted to mention those two.
Excellent.
We all sat down in an office and banged it out, yes.
So I think sometimes when we have so many options, if we narrow it and say that everybody comes to one central location for that information, instead of having all these other platforms, it might make it easier to control the information when they want it, how they want it, it's all, here it is. But we need to be consistently utilizing it so that way, when a parent logs in, they can use that similar app for just their school. But the reason why I like it is because you can see just your school or you can subscribe to all of the schools within our school district. So I think that, and I don't even know that everybody knows that that app exists, to be honest, because I mentioned it to a few of my friends and they said, I had no idea. So again, one more thing that, you know, would be a great utilization to, to use that app to be able to foster more consistent communication, but also be able to have each school be able to, if there's a way, I don't know enough about it, so I apologize. But if there's a way for each school to utilize it and put specific information on that app for them outside of just the calendar, it would be very helpful because it sends me notifications as needed. And that would, you know, again, we can, for those that do have a phone, that have the app, they can easily see information through those notifications. So it's, I would encourage more of one central location for everybody to go to rather than trying to, you know, appease everybody with multiple platforms. I just...
I, I fully agree. And one of the challenges is that we, we've had a district website for a long time and we had a, we've changed frameworks. The framework that we currently have doesn't have an app feature. They call it responsive, so it's supposed to work really well on your phone, but that's questionable. And so we have different systems in place. So there's the Power School Bulletin. That's a, an email blast that goes out if people remember to populate it. But it, it's been in Power School a long time. It's used at different levels. It's, there's a lot of sort of front office practices that have been in place a long time and now we're talking about a consolidated effort to really overthink how we really convey information on a daily basis, which is change of practice, which involves changing what we ask from each building and training and planning. And so it's, I agree with you, but the undertaking to get there is, is very complex because we do have systems that have kind of sprung up. So the, I think the app comes through School Messenger, is that right, Matt?
Yeah.
It's an offshoot of the School Messenger?
Yeah, it's, it's integrated into School Messenger. There is gonna be an update to it at some point in time. We've gotta figure that out. But the notifications go through School Messenger if I choose to notify the app to send it out. But you're right, all the calendar stuff that goes on the website that, that you guys worked on automatically feeds into there, which is really cool because no one has to do, well, yeah. People have to set it up, but once it's set up, it just flows and populates.
Well, and then a consolidated place where you could go in and say, for Power School, I want these notifications, for Power School Learning, I want these notifications, for this other thing, I want these, like the ability to kind of centrally manage what you get. I think that's, that's a big challenge because people are used to being able to tailor their, their information. You know, you can get a subscription from the district website, but it may or may not, it could be that somebody just added a paragraph to a page, you know? It may or may not be substantial and, but you still have to go and look. So it, I agree completely. It's, it's a matter of figuring out what the tools are that we can customize, centralize, get people converted to, and do they do the things that we really know that we need to do in an, in an elegant way? We may not yet have the system that we need. So I think that's the other possibility. But I agree with everything that, the feedback is very helpful because I, I'm a consumer of the service that we're talking about and I, I really fully get it.
Excellent. Are there any other questions, comments? We look forward to the communication committee diving in and seeing what we see and seeing what we need. And I know coming into budgets, there are little tweaks we have to make to the technology that, to assist, then might be the time to be able to vet that as well, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Have a good year.
You as well. So we're on to item number eight, which is establish date intended agenda topics for the meeting with the town council. So Chair Finley Rothausen and I have polled and Naomi cannot make it, but the other four can, the four of us can. And, but the joint meeting with the town council, we're looking for a date of the twentieth of September. And we know that items of discussion off the top are definitely about the school resource officer at the middle school. The grant is, is no longer in play for funding that, so it's about funding the position to keep it going. And we have to vet that between the two bodies because they, the police officer's obviously an employee of the town. We obviously wanna talk about the skate park, so that will be up for discussion. So we will definitely want to, to vet that as well. And the other thing I mentioned to Chair Rothausen is, this is a good time of year to have a joint meeting because we haven't yet started our budget processes. And so as we're preparing our budgets in parallel to the town council, what are we asking for? You know, what's, what do we know is going to come up? Like this fall, we are going into collective bargaining with our teachers' association. We know that's going to be a warrant article. What do they have coming up that may also, do they have collective bargaining units that will be coming up? Do they have major capital investments that will be coming up? So that we're asked, as we're asking our taxpayer at the end of the day, you know, what can they bear? That we're, we're speaking in unison instead of in, in parallel and in, in not really knowing what the other is doing, other than the hearings. So on that note, I think that, that's definitely something else we'll wanna discuss. Are there any other agenda items that you see right now and it's not binding? If something comes up, we can absolutely add it at any time. I think we did mention the building tonight too, so, the Brentwood Building, or the Red Building, we'll call it now, because it's ours. So if anything comes up, just email Marge, copy me, but I will reach out to the council and find out what they're also looking to do and we will look to have that next meeting on the twentieth. Excellent. So we are on to item number nine, which is the August Academy outcomes with Mark.
Thank you. So another one in the history books. These seem to come around faster and faster. This year, we took a slightly different tack in that rather than a, an official three-day academy, our first day of August Academy on, on Tuesday of last week was primarily dedicated to math training. Our entire elementary staff, as you know, are now in their second year of implementation of Invision's math. And so we were very fortunate to have consultants come to work with our elementary math teachers and teachers of pre-algebra at the middle school on sort of so what after the first year. And the consultants were very responsive to the feedback from our teachers about the kinds of questions that they asked, having a year under their belt, things that worked, things about which they still had questions, a lot of questions around technology component and maximizing the use of that. A lot of questions about the language base of the program and how to continue to support that. And so we were very fortunate to have consultants in a K to two, three to five and six to pre-algebra group on Tuesday. In addition, as you all know, the board and our community allowed us to have an adoption of a secondary math program that is Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. This is the first year of implementation for that. And so the, on Tuesday, we had a consultant work with Algebra I, Algebra II and Geometry teachers as well and get them up and running on that platform and the challenges associated with a brand-new secondary math program. In addition, on Tuesday, the high school worked on NIESC accreditation. That whole process is beginning again. And so Principal Putney pulled her team minus the math group that was in the math training, but the math group will have plenty of opportunity to weigh in as well, but they worked on that. At the, for the specialists at all the art, music, PE and the like, district-wide, had several projects that they were working on, not least adapting a full-day kindergarten program to the specials, which is a happy problem, and a range of other issues as well. And so that was really a day that was very, very well-received by the teachers for that kind of work. Days Wednesday and Thursday last week, as we have in the past, we brought teachers off-site. And, you know, we've taken the, the question about communication, again, that's been raised by the board very seriously and we've extended that conversation to include not only sort of what's, you know, what would make for a more appropriate level of communication that's really helpful to the community, but we expanded that a little bit to talk about what kind of district we are and what kind of district we continue to want to evolve to be. And so we had a lot of candid conversations over two days facilitated by a nationally renowned organizational manager named Kimberly Miller, who really worked with us about establishing sort of open, open dialogue about where our strengths are, where our challenges lie and how we can maximize our strengths and, and improve the areas that need improvement so that we can really deliver the kind of education that our students deserve and that our community expects. And so over two days, we tackled a lot of really challenging issues around what makes every teacher a leader, the responsibility that a teacher has to assume a leadership role, not in the sense of a principal or assistant principal, but a, a leader around embracing opportunities and challenges and what does it take to really realize that? And what are the responsibilities that teachers have to meet challenges head-on and, and to do so with, with an appropriate level of challenge, given the fact that we're an academic organization that should really welcome dialogue and so on? And, and at the same time, do it in a respectful way because at the end of the day, that's really how anything positive and constructive is going to happen when we can engage in that way. So it was a very, 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 very productive and I think sort of eye-opening two, two days for our staff at our August Academy and I think that will resonate throughout the course of the year. And in and amongst all that was a variation in the conversation that we've had today, which is how do we really continue to take a proactive role in telling our story about what we do for and on behalf of students every day and, and how we can respond when, when days aren't great? Do we respond defensively or proactively and positively and how's that look? And so I think that will resonate for, for years to come, actually. So in a nutshell, that was August Academy.
Thank you. Are there any questions about August Academy? Andy?
So in our last board meeting, we gave, we gave you the ability to promote the, the beta test for the, that the, was, was being done for the teachers get involved. Was that promoted during August Academy?
So that was the, because of the way that the schedule went, that probably didn't get strange to say, as, as through all the effort that we went to, as much promotion on that, those August Academy days as we might have liked, just because our schedule was really, really full. However, the leadership team is well-aware and that is going to be available to teachers probably in late October, early November. And so certainly through the leadership team, I believe that they, on Friday, spent some time in each of their buildings discussing that. So less at August Academy, just the way the schedule worked and literally just trying to find the flow. We didn't wanna interrupt it, but the leadership team absolutely is aware of it and, and has already begun to promote it and that will happen at the, probably the end of October. We consulted with the MTA and, and that with, and that was very well-received by the MTA. And so it's a go from their perspective. And Dr. Seines, of course, is delighted that Merrimack can continue to partner with, with him on his initiative and that we'll get a lot of benefit of that too. So more to come in late fall.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the academy? Seeing none, thank you for another great end-of-summer activity and I think it has us ready for a great school year. So being we kicked it off first day so far, very eventful. We love it. So I'm gonna go on to item number 10, which is an update on summer maintenance projects. This is part two by Matt.
Yeah.
Do you wanna cut, maybe we can cut one of the lights to make it easier? Thanks, Chris. I'll pick the wrong light if I do it myself, so.
Oh, that's good.
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, last time I gave you the update, it didn't look too hopeful, but as things always happen, over twenty years, those last two weeks of the year, it all kinda comes together. There's still a little few bits and pieces. There was some shelving for the art room, I believe, that, that came in that wasn't correct. the art room, I believe, that came in that wasn't correct. But I'm going to give you a little kind of pictorial overview, with the exception of the MES calf tables, which I forgot to take a picture of, which I'll bring next time, and the roof at Reed's Ferry School, which is complete. I didn't think you'd feel too excited about looking at a piece of, you know, rubber membrane on top of a building. Plus, I didn't feel like climbing the ladder to get up there. So.
The root of it.
Yeah, the root of it. So this is the, oops, let me get back up there. This is your new parking lot at Thornton's Ferry. This looked like a third-world country with, it's just broken up and everything like that, and that's the backside of the building going towards the lower, the lower playground. This effort, here's the entrance as you come in. There's one arrow going to where you go around the circle, and there's an exit there, too. Here's the circle that you see. It's been all redone. There's some nice curbing around the circle. It really has kind of transformed the look of the school. Here's coming into the parent drop-off area. All that was done, including the parking lot that was for the visitors and the parents and whatever. We had enough money in the budget because, as you know, we partner with the town on the bid for this entire project. So we had a little bit of extra money. So we did that parking lot, because that parking lot up there was original to the initial sidewalk and the whole reconfiguration of Thornton's Ferry years ago. So it could have been probably 15, this was when Les Carter was principal. It could have been 15 years ago that that was done. So we decided to do that also. This is a picture of one of the water filtration units that I had posted on Facebook. So you can see the dual-stage of it all goes in one canister, comes out, goes in another, then goes into the school. The testing on this, everything came back non-detectable. There was a little aberration in the test for Reed's and the high school, but the control sample, they take a control sample that has absolutely zero in it, and then they test the sample from the school. The control sample had some sort of reading in it that threw off, that really made the other test invalid. So we're going to do a retest on Reed's and the high school, and we expect those to be zero also, just because it was a false, it was a false result on a test. So that is the, one of the filtration systems. It's in the school. They're all operational. So there may be a couple of water fountains where the stream is a little bit weak. We have to adjust those. There may be a couple of water fountains where the stream is a little stronger than it should be, so we need to adjust those also. So maintenance was going through and doing that right before the weekend, and probably has cleaned it up by now. This is some of the new cabinetry that was in the budget. I mean, Marge asked me, did you have anything to do with the colors? It's absolutely not. But I think it's really, really nice as far as nice, clean, modern. It's like HGTV-looking almost, you know? All I need is the quartz countertop with the waterfall edge, you know? The waterfall edge is in now, right? And so here's another area that you can see all the new casework, the cabinetry, the tables, everything like that. It just looks absolutely beautiful. And then lastly, I'm sorry about the orientation of that. That's one of the sinks that were in the classroom, where the whole cabinets were replaced, new countertops, new sink. There's still some sinks where the water needs to be connected, and our plumber is working on that this evening and worked over it on the weekend. So it's a matter of days before that is done. But everything that was of a capital kind of nature and improvement in the budget is complete, with the exception of the bleachers in back of the high school. Those are going to be done. Steel's being engineered right now, and so those will be done after the football season. There wasn't enough time to shoot all the grades, plan out where the cement posts are going to go, because it's not going to look like the old bleacher. It's going to match the newer bleachers. So instead of just having these bleachers laying on the ground in the dirt, they're going to be on cement pylons, and each one has to be engineered exactly where it goes. The grade needs to be mapped out, and so it's kind of a complex operation. So that's why the lead time is so long on that. So that'll be done after, unfortunately, after the football season. But for next year, it should be beautiful, and it should match up with the existing, and the ADA access should match up perfectly with the existing, too. So it'll turn your facility back there into a really nice-looking facility for Merrimack High School and for the community. So I'm really kind of excited about that, as I'm excited about all the rest of these. So that is the Summer Maintenance Projects Update Part Two.
Just not as excited about climbing up on a roof and looking at a membrane.
No, I didn't want to do that, no.
We've seen a lot of roofs in our time.
I've done that before.
You have?
With Tom, and he pushes me towards the edge, and I don't like it.
No, 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 no workman's comp, please. Awesome. Well, thank you, Matt. And we're on to the housekeeping part of our program. So on to item number 11, which is the approval of August 20, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept? Cindy, second, by Andy. Are there any edits? Cindy?
Okay. Page number two, line number...
Yeah, put it twice, Matt.
Yep.
Just once, right?
No, twice.
Twice.
Line number 73. It starts out, that whole section, "Board Member Gualyumi would like to new roles and responsibilities of the student wellness coordinator. She would like to know how the vision can be accomplished with a student wellness coordinator and how the vision cannot be accomplished without..." Something's a little weird about that. I guess if you just had one of those sentences, it would be fine. They're saying the same thing. And then I just put for that third sentence, "She also would like tasks identified that the mental health committee members are doing that are taking time away from their work with, important work with students." Something, just to rephrase that a little bit, that section. Going on to page seven, line number 309. It says, "Board Member Gualyumi recommended that if the board approved the survey..." Just cross out "request." So it'd be if the board approved the survey, that a conversation with the Merrimack Teachers' Association occurred before presenting the information at August Academy. I think that fixes that sentence. Line 313, "Board Member Gualyumi," instead of saying "express concern" over, just simply, "Board Member Gualyumi asked how the survey results would get back to teachers if the survey was anonymous." Page eight, line 349, "Board Member Gualyumi reiterated that there is no cost to the district..." And then I would just put "and taxpayers" or slash taxpayers. And that's it.
Are there any other edits? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. We are on to item number 12, which is consent with Mark.
So under consent tonight, we have the following educator resignations. Jennifer Adams, math teacher at Merrimack Middle School, and Catherine Peetish, librarian, library media specialist at Mastercola Elementary School. We also have the following teacher nominations. Marielle Carmelo, oral language teacher at Merrimack High School. Samantha Demers, grade-one teacher at Reed's Ferry School. Alicia Dion, science teacher at Merrimack High School, and Stephanie Womersley, preschool teacher at Mastercola Elementary School.
Whoops, I had that on. I will entertain a motion to accept. Andy?
Move that we accept the consent agenda is read.
Is there a second? Seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. Item number 13 is other. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Andy?
This morning, I had several parents reach out to me about the water filtration at the schools. Once we found that, I communicated with Matt to find out about it, and he told me the completion. I got back to the parents, who then went on their own on Facebook to tell everybody that the water filtration's in place. Many emails and communications with parents thankful for what we had done and very happy that we were so proactive, so.
Thank you. Any other correspondence? And Marge?
I was just in receipt of correspondence late this afternoon from Anne Marie Banfield under the right to no law, asking questions off the article that appeared in the Manchester Union Leader about our social-emotional learning curriculum that's being piloted at Thornton's Ferry School. And I think you were all in receipt of it as well. It came to all of us.
Excellent. Cindy?
Can I ask a question about that?
Uh, yeah.
Just a simple question. Now, with right to no laws, does that work for people outside of our district?
It's a question that needs to be explored. I would say more unlikely I'll respond to it because I think I have something to say about this. But the fact of the matter is, I haven't had such from a person outside of our district. So it presents itself as something new.
It just made me think. I mean, not that I, you know, felt we should or, you know, shouldn't.
No, no, I've not had such before.
I was just curious.
But interest has been expressed, and so if we have answers for the ready, then I think we'll make it known.
So if there's no other correspondence, are there any comments from the board? Just one, I just want to make you aware that in the New Hampshire Sunday News, which is the Union Leader's Sunday paper, that Marge and I were contacted, and an article ran, and it's about the Sununu, Governor Sununu is looking to do a study on requiring schools to start after Labor Day. And that's something we do because it's right for us, and we have the data from parents surveyed that had 88% come back in favor of us starting after Labor Day. So with that, they're doing an article about the Sununu initiative, and both Marge and I were contacted, and we really took the vein of local control. It's about what's right for the district, and we would not want to impose what's best for us on others. So that was in the Sunday paper, so I will give the copy to the district to keep on file if they want it. If not, they can put that great new fireplace in the Red Building. So... And is there any other comment from the board? Any other comment from administration? Marge?
I will just say this. We've just gotten unbelievable coverage in the newspaper of recent, and also on September 3, yesterday, there was in the Union Leader, an article entitled "Schools See Fallout From Students' Home Lives Take On Trauma," and Julie DeLuca was included within the article because we have a Project Grow grant, as does Laconia, so both districts were referenced, and Julie did a great job representing us.
Excellent. So if there's no other comments, we will go on to item number 14, new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none. 15, committee reports. Are there any committee reports between the last meeting and the first day of school? It didn't seem likely. So we will close committee reports. We have no public, so we will close public comments on agenda items. And we'll take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Cindy, seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you and good night.